Good morning. Thank you all for joining us. Hopefully, we've seen you at a town hall before. If not, I am Courtney Lull. I am chairperson for the Board of Directors for ICSA and I'm so excited to have everybody here for this town hall. So this is our April Town Hall. We do have these every month. We do have one side note. In the interest of continuing to provide educational opportunities with all organizations that have just awesome things to say about GEO, New York GEO is going to be doing some events every Tuesday. From now, I believe until the end of the year. So since we only do these once a month, we've decided to defer to them and allow them to do their town halls on Tuesday or their events on Tuesday. And we will start to move our meetings to Wednesdays. We will get the invite out for the May Town Hall after this event has ended. But if you have any questions, always feel free to email info@icsa.org and we will be happy to get back to you. So as always, if you have any questions during the presentation, whether it's ICSA related or it's about the presentation, please feel free to enter those questions in the chat function within Zoom and we'll be happy to address those. We do have Kevin McCray on the line and he will be moderating any of the questions today. We did have some submitted ahead of time. Thank you very much for doing so. And we will read through those as they relate to the presentation. And then again, if you have anything regarding ICSA, any questions about the organization or your renewal, recertification, or anything else, please feel free to email info@icsa.org. So today's presentation, I'm very excited to have Jeff Hammond here today to talk about the C448. As I get to know more information about this organization, about CSA and the binational standard that was created, I couldn't be more excited about the opportunity ahead of us. So we asked Jeff if he would talk today about what the C448 is in case anyone on the call isn't aware. And then kind of give us an update as to what's going on within CSA and then C448 as it relates to geothermal. So Kevin, do we have any questions in the chat as of right now as it relates to ICSA or anything else?
No, not in the chat. We just have the questions that were submitted in advance, but I think those will probably fit in best after we hear from Jeff.
Absolutely. So as of right now, then, if everyone is ready, I will stop sharing my screen and we will allow Jeff Hammond to get started for us. Take it over, Jeff.
Great. Thanks, Courtney. And my day job is Intertech, but as Courtney mentioned, I'm going to be talking about CSA, C448 today. And so I'm going to be presenting as the, as the Chair of the next C448 revision. And I will go ahead and share my screen. So you can see the slideshow here. Okay. And hopefully, everybody can see that. First off, I'd like to certainly thank ICSA for setting this town hall meeting up. And I appreciate everybody's time when, when you're attending these meetings. It gives us the opportunity to provide the latest information. This is a critical time for our industry. There's just so much opportunity. I hear every day of new efforts towards electrification away from fossil fuels. But we do have some challenges in our industry. It's a really important time right now that we have a common voice and we have consistency and direction. So that's why I agreed to take this role as Chairman for the next C448 update. You know, I've been in the industry almost 35 years. Now I'm telling my age here. But we've consistently had misinformation, rules of thumb, and unfortunately, some bad installations. So moving forward, we really want to take advantage of all these opportunities and the excitement with GEO and electrification and that kind of thing. So this is actually one method to get there is promoting a standard and having the same voice so that we can move forward as an industry and promote geothermal and also promote ICSA. You know, the new direction of ICSA is just a great opportunity to start moving that direction. So that's my little spiel, I guess, before we, we move into the actual slides. And the title here is, you know, what is it and why is it so important to our industry? So just a little bit of a disclaimer and, and some disclosures here to make sure that you know where I'm coming from on the, on the slides. These are my opinion. They're not necessarily CSA Group. It's volunteer information or volunteer organization at this point and nonprofit organization. So I'm Chair of the next revision of C448. Mark Metzner is Vice Chair. And Mark, myself and all the subcommittee chairs, as well as all the members are unpaid volunteers. So we're either really passionate about the industry or gluttons for punishment or both. I like to think maybe it's a little bit of both, but we are certainly passionate and we definitely want to promote ICSA and the industry. CSA Group, as I mentioned, is a nonprofit. It specializes in certification testing and product verification. It's a non-governmental agency, even though it's Canadian Standards Association, it is non-governmental. And one of the real keys here with working with CSA is cooperation with ANSI and ICSA, which we already have, you know, a good deal of, of effort here. And, you know, that's, that's something that brings us into a binational standard with this cooperation between the various organizations. CSA does get some funding from the standard sales when, when, when you purchase a C448 standard. But at this point, it really doesn't fund all the efforts that it takes to create new standards. So, so it's, it's one of those things where we're trying to, to grow the industry along with making sure that the standard is available to everyone. So those are the disclaimers, disclosures before moving on. These are the topics I would like to address and we do have time for question, questions afterwards. So feel free to, to send that via chat and we'll collect those and go through those questions at the end. Like to give a little bit of a history of C448 so you can see where it came from, where it's going. A lot of stakeholders involved in this standard, including hopefully the ones on, on this Zoom meeting. ICSA's had a lot of involvement in C448. So I want to talk about that, some history there. Also, you know, why are we looking to C448 instead of, you know, some other standard? Then we'll take a look at what's planned for the next revision, which is going to be starting here soon. We've already had a kickoff meeting with committee chairs. Our next meeting is a kickoff with the entire member section as well as the chairs again. And then we'll start holding some of those meetings. So I'll get into all that information as well. And like I mentioned at the end, we'll have our Q and A session. All right. So here's a little bit of, of history on this standard. The first edition was way back in, in 1992 and it was a Canadian standard. It was actually just residential called C445, the design and installation for residential systems. They were called Earth Energy Systems at the time. In 1994, there was a C447, which was the commercial institutional version of that. Then in 2002, it was combined into what we have today, which is C448. That's both residential and commercial. At that time, again, it was still just a Canadian standard through 2013. The next edition, which was published in 2016, is the first binational standard. So what we're talking about now, this C448 is actually an ANSI, CSA and ICSA standard, the C448 standard. And that's really a big deal because not only is it part of the building code in Canada as a, as a CSA standard, but also being recognized by ANSI is an organization that engineers are familiar with, code officials are familiar with, and now having the ICSA name on the standard, we just add that extra level of legitimacy. So it is an ANSI, CSA, ICSA standard at this point in time. It didn't start out that way when it was first released in 2016, but shortly after that, all of the changes were made to make that also an ICSA standard. In this year, 2021, we're going to start in May with, with committee meetings so that we can start looking at the ICSA recommendations from the Standards Committee. You know, they worked really hard on putting together some recommendations to make C448 inclusive of all the really good portions of the, of the ICSA standard, as well as new changes for technologies that might not be included. So, so we're moving forward quickly on, on these revisions. So who's involved in C448? We have a lot of involvement from a number of different areas. Utilities are involved actively, both from US and Canada. We have drillers, which is, you know, super, super important for geothermal. Geothermal system isn't really all that functional without a ground loop, right? Installers, mechanical installers, manufacturers of heat pumps, as well as flow centers, accessories, things like that. We have a good representation from regulators and government officials, designers, engineers, researchers, academia, and other trade organizations and standard organizations. That's really important. You know, if we have something in C448 that is in opposition to what Ashtray publishes or IATMO or what have you, it just leads to confusion. So we want to make sure that there's a lot of involvement in these standards so that we're making sure that everything is consistent and we're able to promote the industry in, in the right light. These are some of the current stakeholders. We're still adding some companies to the committees, but you can see this is a really long list. It's full of acronyms and, and lots of names that I think you're probably familiar with. As I mentioned, we have everywhere from drillers to manufacturers to other organizations. So I'm really happy with, with the participation in this standard. Even in the last standard, in the 2016 standard, we had a lot of participation from especially ICSA and, and the, and in GWA. So that was super helpful. ICSA's involvement has been crucial to the development of the ANSI CSA ICSA C448. And in fact, the Standards Committee started in 2018 to compare the 2016 ICSA standards to the C448 standard. They really came up with a great detailed report in 2019. And what they did in that report was they looked at the content in the 2016 ICSA standards and compared that to what's in C448. So there were some content that, that may have been missing or needed to be updated. They looked at the flow of some of the sections, you know, some of the cost of updating these standards is the page count. So ICSA had some great recommendations for consolidating. Anytime we can remove pages, we cut the cost of updating the standards and also improves the, the time that it takes to go through all those edits. So they had a really nice list of suggestions and that is all being considered starting here in May when the committees meet. So that allows us to incorporate those suggestions from ICSA just to kind of further this direction of having a standard that we can all use. The end goal, of course, is sunsetting the ICSA standards and that has been approved, was approved by the previous ICSA Board of Directors. So we have some work to do to finalize all that, but we're well on the path to, to that binational standard. Just to kind of give you an update of where that's at with relation to ICSA. You can see here in the, in the title, ANSI CSA ICSA C448, right on the front cover of the C448 standard. It's nice to see the ICSA logo on the front cover as well, endorsed by ICSA right here. And you can see the revision date. So even though this is a 2016 standard, it was revised in 2017 to include ICSA. So that was a special effort in, in getting ICSA added. And that does add again legitimacy to making sure we're all on the same page, talking the same language. So why would we want to said sunset these standards? You know, one thing I want to make sure and emphasize is that sunsetting the ICSA standards in no way takes anything away from the hard work of ICSA, Oklahoma State University, Dr. Bose, any of the early pioneers in our industry. Really without ICSA standards and all this hard work, we wouldn't be where we are today. So I'm excited about the direction of ICSA, sunsetting of the standards. It just helps us avoid having multiple standards in the US. You know, it can be confusing, especially in key markets. You know, we don't want to have a lot of excitement in a particular area and they decide to create their own standard because they're not really sure what to use. So we really want to avoid that and, and become a, you know, provide that consistent message so that regulators know there, there is a binational standard out there that's available. So it doesn't take anything away from ICSA standards. It simply helps us pull together. We need to make sure we include the latest technologies. So energy piles, for example, that was not in the C448 standard or in the ICSA standards, but it will be in the next revision and that could make a big difference on commercial applications. I mentioned earlier, the ICSA suggestions help us take page count out. So we want to make things more concise, more easy to understand and less costly to update. A single standard just really helps us demonstrate our industry credibility and cohesiveness. You know, we're all moving in the same direction. So we want to demonstrate that. And, and really, this is probably one of the most important ones. We need to be able to adopt the standard in code language. So local jurisdictions have a way to talk about geothermal and talk about the ground loop and, and those kinds of things. So that, those are all very important. I wanted to provide some examples of references to standards, just to sort of frame the conversation as far as, you know, how we use the C448. If you're on the residential side of, of the market, you're used to hearing, you know, provide your load calculation according to ACC manual J. That's sort of the de facto residential load calculation in the US or, or F280 in Canada. So that's not uncommon to hear that. For sizing equipment, there is some local jurisdiction, jurisdictions that use ACC manual S as part of their building code requirements. So that's not an unusual request, you know, per ACC manual J or, or C448 in Canada. In commercial, we're used to referring to Ashtray 62.1 for commercial ventilation or NFPA 90 point or 90A or 90B. So those are all standards that we just sort of use almost as common language. One of the frustrations with some people that are not in our industry is we talk in acronyms and standards and, you know, 90.1 and 448 this. And so that's just common language. But we need to do the same thing with our, our ground loop standards, with our heat pump sizing standards and so forth. So the hope is that moving forward, we would have the same type of language. For example, you know, the bore hole shall be grounded per the ANSI CSA ICSA standard. And what section is that? That gives us some sort of reference and allows us to, to give some information to code inspectors and, and officials. Here's another example. We're used to seeing these on heat pumps. You could have a CSA listed heat pump, an ETL listed heat pump, a UL listed heat pump. It's all the same because they're all using the same standard. So if you have a CSA listed heat pump that's, that has a C and a U S on either side, it's the same thing as an ETL with a C and a U S or a UL with a C and a U S because they're being tested by either CSA or ETL or UL. But they're tested to the standards for the US and Canada. So it's really no different on the heat pump certification as it is on making sure that we have standards and installation norms. This is a big one here. We're all used to the ISO HRI Ashtray 13256-1 and 13256-2. We know if a heat pump is, is tested and rated, rated in accordance with 13256-1 or 2, that it's sort of a self policing kind of thing. It's manufacturers industry, so organization. So we know that everybody's playing on the same level field that we, and they're tested according to those, those standards. So whether you go to AHRI directory or you go to NRCAN, you're going to see the same standards. So another example of why we need a standard that's, that's usable on both sides of the border. Here's one that's sort of a hot button for me. We, we need some consistency on antifreeze. I pulled, I didn't put any names in here. I just simply pulled four heat pump manufacturers data. Heat pump manufacturer A, B, C, and D. To just kind of compare what the recommendations are for antifreeze. And then I also have a flow center manufacturers recommendations here. So if you look at the yellow highlights, you can see here a couple of the manufacturers recommend 21% methanol for 15 degrees. A couple of them recommend 17% and the flow center manufacturer recommends 17%. So which one do I use? Not, not a great direction there. If we look at propylene glycol, we have, let's see here, none there, but we have 24% with manufacturer B. 25% with manufacturer C. Here's 25% with manufacturer D. But they also call out a food grade propylene glycol and some of these others call out inhibited propylene glycol. It's a little bit confusing. And the flow center manufacturer calls out 25%. Ethanol, there's quite a lot of variation there. Here's 20%, 23%, 24%, 25%, 22%. So we really need these standards to, to make sure that we are all on the same page. Not to say anybody's wrong here, but just to get us all on the, on the, on the conversation and make sure that we can provide some direction for the industry. So with just some examples and a little bit of background there, hopefully that gives you an idea of, you know, some of the goals behind the C448 standard. These are the sections that are included in the current standard. Some general requirements for all section or all systems. Dot one is commercial, two is residential. Then we get into the different loop types, vertical loops, horizontal, submerged or pond loops, open loop configuration, standing column wells, direct expansion. And we do have a piping committee that touches on all sections. It's not its own section. But since the piping committee, you can see here, would be included in all of these sections, it's its own committee. As we start to update the standard, we find out about new technology and new ways to do things. So the next one is going to have dot nine, which is energy piles, important for commercial buildings. This one's exciting. It'll be in a new annex, sewer heat waste recovery. There's so much heat that's available just from the sewer system, the piping coming out of the building. It's a great way to use, you know, heat pump technology. So that's going to be a new annex. I'm excited about this one in particular, the new heat exchange fluid committee, because it touches on everything here and might help us clear out, clear up some of the antifreeze questions that we had earlier, but also even water quality. So that's, that's the plans for, for the new revisions. We're going to try to incorporate community and district loops into the commercial institutional. You could argue that, you know, sometimes that's residential, but so for now, we'll start with commercial. And it may morph into something else, but at least it gives us an opportunity to address that. That, that's becoming more and more popular all the time is community and district loops. And it's great for the technology and just helps promote geothermal. So we do have to update this standard every five years per the CSA requirements. And being that it's an accredited standard, there is some formality to it to make sure that it's, it's written in the proper format, includes the right stakeholders and it's timely. So in this particular case, we reaffirmed it in 2020. A lot of that was due to COVID just because we, we had to, we couldn't really meet in person. It was hard to organize everybody. So it has been reaffirmed just to buy us some time. That's why we're starting this May. In these updates, we would have liked to start earlier, but it just wasn't easy to do. So when we do an update or a reaffirmation, we have to look at references. Are we referencing the right materials? Have codes changed, those kinds of things? Definitions, we had a, you know, really, really great discussions with the, you know, the Well Water Association, National Groundwater Association, because some of the terminology wasn't correct with regard to bores and wells and all that kind of thing. So that's, you know, super important that we keep the terminology consistent. We want to make sure it's a performance based approach throughout the standard. Add new technology and always incorporate feedback from users. There's a really nice review period that once everything is, is, is ready to go, there's, there's time to actually review the standard before it's finally adopted. In some of the continuing development that the C448 committees are working on, it's incorporating some new piping materials. I noticed, you know, PERT was on the list for new piping materials. Any kind of grounding enhancement, I mentioned the waste heat recovery earlier. We're always concerned about protection of groundwater, looking at new heat exchangers. I mentioned these two here, but also some clarification and guidance, antifreeze, heat transfer fluid. This is also something that we have to always keep in mind is incorporation of updates from other standards. So if Ashtray is working on something, IATMO, ICSA, we've got to be in the loop, so to speak, with, with, with all these organizations. As far as initiatives that are, that are ongoing, you know, the Standards Committee, like I said, provided a great report. So that is going to be incorporated into discussions for the next revision here. Ongoing collaboration is important. One of the reasons for this town hall, in fact, is to make sure that we, we have good collaboration. We have some interesting discussions with IATMO on the US ECEHC, which has solar and hydronics as part of this committee. That's primarily with the heat transfer fluid. So we don't want IATMO to say, do X and we do Y. That's not very helpful. Same thing with Ashtray 90.1, minimum efficiencies and this green standard 189.1, that's super important as well. Training is something that is, is important. If we're training contractors or drillers and we're referencing standards that aren't consistent, we have some contractors doing it one way and others doing it another way, not, not terribly helpful. So those ongoing initiatives are super important. As far as where C448 is now, you will find that we have already incorporated C448 into some of the ICC codes. So if you look at the International Mechanical Code, it already references piping valves, fitting connections. It references here, if you notice ANSI CSA ICSA C448. So there's the expert right there. And this, these are some tables from the IRC and IMC residential and mechanical codes. You can see right here for cross link polyethylene for HDPE, even for PERT. So this is going to be helpful in moving forward. So the engineers know that they can find this information when they're referring to the, you know, the ICC codes. They're going to have some sort of reference in there for those particular standards. So the key here is really building a stronger industry. We've got to work together. It has to work on both sides of the border and we all have to be growing the, the same direction. You know, we were, we're all trying to promote the, the industry and grow geothermal as we go. Some of the advantages of our single North American standard is the accreditation. You know, CSA is an accreditation organization, just like ANSI. So, you know, it may seem awfully formal sometimes, but that formality makes sure that we are doing things according to, you know, what, what code standards would be, how the code standards will be written, how, you know, local jurisdictions, jurisdictions are going to be enforcing these codes. So we need an accredited body to make sure that the, the language is appropriate, that we're including stakeholders. And one of the best things about this process is it's a consensus standard. So it's not a majority rules. We have to agree on where we need to go. I know that can be a challenge, but that's, it's set up to do that. So we, we have to take that challenge and make sure that we are, we agree upon it. We had a lot of, of input from ICSA and GWA, as I mentioned earlier on the 2016 edition. So I mentioned the consensus standard, that's super important. We want to try to remove a lot of these differences. There's so many rules of thumb out there that drive me nuts. We've got to have some consistent reference there, but we also have to simplify it. It's got to be something that regulators can understand or they can't really enforce it. We need framework for practitioners so that we, we can make sure that we're doing things on a consistent basis. Confidence, that's a big deal. We have some engineers, consulting engineers who don't feel confident enough on geothermal to be designing a system for the building. So they talk the customer out of it. We need to build that confidence. Each new addition helps validate and, and include a lot of these new advancements. You know, there's always something around the corner, some new loop type, some new heat transfer method. Maybe great, may not be great. We have to investigate, find out what's going on. And it's really, you know, a pillar for the industry so that we can explain the benefits of the technology. It's, you know, this is one that's near and dear to my heart as we develop training. We need a resource. We've got to have something that we can refer to even with regard to sort of We need a resource, we've got to have something that we can refer to, even with regard to certification and accreditation. We've got to have something we can refer to. This is a biggie right here, as we move into electrification, elimination of fossil fuels, it's a huge job creator. And, you know, all of GEO's efforts and IXP's efforts have need to have some sort of foundation and standard. So this this is this can really help with job creation and the and the growth ultimately of our industry. So a performance based standard is going to give something that provides value to stakeholders. Some of the challenges, I mentioned a little bit earlier, we do have engineers who are reluctant to design systems. We've got to overcome that hurdle and education's important, so we've got to, we have to provide those unknowns. I think electrification will increase adoption of technology, but we need to have consistency. We don't, we can't afford to have bad installations out there if everybody gets excited about it. Which becomes more important on the training side. New individuals, you know, there are a lot of a lot of us old. Folks in the industry that, you know, I keep seeing more and more people retiring, I think, wow, we get to bring new people in. Well, when we bring new people in, we need some sort of reference material so we can bring them in on the right foot. There there's some exciting new in situ testing methods that I'm anxious to explore. So we've got to review that to make sure that we can get better conductivity numbers. Maybe we can save some cost on installations if we have a better handle and maybe lower cost way to do conductivity testing. New heat exchangers, new heat transfer fluids. We haven't really addressed some of these new fluids out there. And as I mentioned earlier, we've got to continually change to adopt to new codes and and standards. So what can you do? Well, we really need you to help promote IXP, I mean, that's probably the the biggest thing here. You know, we've got, we've got to get some of these members that were longtime members and and moved away from the industry. We've got to get them back to IXP, we'd like for you to purchase the standard. You'll see earlier that there's a good deal that IXP has on the standard. And we need to refer to the standard when we're designing, training, looking at best practices, local code reference. The more we talk about it and spread the word, the better off we are in getting the getting this information out. We should ask heat paint, heat pump manufacturers and other industry stakeholders to help educate customers and industry affiliates on the importance of a single North American standard. It's just going to help with consistency of message. So that's what you can do to help and I certainly appreciate it. It moving forward so that we can, we can build this industry. Here's our schedule for the next edition, we are going to start our TC meetings, our technical committee meetings, probably aren't going to be face to face. Maybe at some point in time, but right now there'll be virtual meetings. So all the various committees for those different sections are going to start meeting. There's a public review period, internal review after the public review, just to see what needs to change, if anything. There's a balloting process for voting members of the C four four eight committees, process review by CSA. And any final editing, so normally this takes about eighteen months, we are really going to try to fast track this. And hopefully we can have something early twenty twenty two with all of the IXP recommendations included. For now, the the twenty sixteen version is pretty good, it had a lot of IXP involvement, had NGWA involvement. And it it's actually a really, really good standard, I'm a little biased, obviously. But, you know, it it'll get us by until we can get some of these changes made and updates. So our goal is is early twenty twenty two, I don't know if we can beat that goal or not, but that's really what we're shooting for. There's a really good deal on the standard, this this was part of the agreement in twenty seventeen when the IXP logo appeared. On on the standard and IXP was incorporated into the title ANSI CSA IXP. So normally you'd pay a hundred and fifty five US if you go to ANSI and you buy the standard. IXP has an arrangement with with CSA where it can be purchased for a hundred dollars from IXP. So that is already on the website, if you go to expa.org and you'll find this special pricing. And that's to really help promote getting this standard out there. Now, you know, IXP only can sell this to members at that price, that's the agreement with CSA. So another reason to be an IXP member is to have special pricing on on this standard and whatever other benefits. Are included as part of this later on, so this is on the on the IXP website already. And I've spoken for a lot of 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 this session, so I want to make sure we have plenty of time for questions. Is there anything that that has come to mind after after the presentation?
Yeah, there are several questions, Jeff. One of them, I think I'd like to start with is, is CSA considered kind of the home base for maintaining four forty eight?
Yes, CSA is the accreditation organization, so we, so it's it's the framework really for. How the updates are made, the review process, balloting, things like that.
Okay, so to follow up on that, does CSA have a resource that code officials can contact to be directed to the right standard?
Yes, in in CSA has a website that has all of the CSA standards, but also ANSI. In the US would be a good resource for the various standards, so you can you can purchase. C four four eight through CSA through ANSI or at special pricing through IXP.
Obviously, there's an arrangement with ANSI and IXP, but does CSA have agreements with other national standards organizations to promote the use of the C four forty eight?
Yes, each of the, each of the committees has individuals from IATMO, Ashrae. Natural Resources Canada, HRAI, we're working with DOE and EPA, hopefully we can get some participation there. So, yeah, the goal is to involve as many of those organizations as possible and then help report back and forth. So that not only does IXP and CSA get that information, but those. Organizations as well, IATMO is a good example I mentioned earlier, so IATMO knows what CSA is doing. And CSA knows what IATMO is doing.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. You mentioned in your presentation that C four forty eight is recognized by the Canadian Building Code. And you also referenced that at least portions of the standard are referenced in the IRC and the IMC. Are there any jurisdictions or regions that four forty eight has already been approved as as the geo heat pump standard?
Not directly that I'm aware of, there may be that I'm not aware of, but because it's in the ICC codes. Then those jurisdictions, if they're referring to IMC or IRC, it would have reference to C four four eight.
Okay. What about, obviously, you've talked about at the, towards the end of your talk about some of the things that are needed and the cooperation and and the utilization of it. Are there are there organized plans to extend the approval beyond where it's already at?
Yeah, this is one of them is, you know, getting the word out like this, working with organizations. Yeah, I think all of us really have a an opportunity to promote a consistent message. So so it would be, you know, great if we could, we're all volunteers, so we don't have any marketing budget. But we do have the ability to talk to colleagues and, you know, MEPs and customers. You know, other organizations, that's really the the best way to get the word out, at least in my opinion. But we we would certainly want to encourage other organizations like IXP to, you know, to communicate to their members as well. So that that's the best way at this point.
You, this is probably a little difficult to answer, but are you aware of any of any examples where the existence of four forty eight has improved relationships with. Building officials or smooth project approval?
I'm not personally aware, but, you know, from my standpoint, I work for a heat pump manufacturer, so I'm not always involved on the front lines. You know, with with directly with drillers or mechanical contractors, sometimes with mechanical engineers. I'm sure there must be examples, I don't know of any off the top of my head.
Lance Mcnevin from the Plastics Pipe Institute shares that the twenty one edition of the Plumbing and Mechanical Officials Code. Has recently been published as USHG. C and the G is for geothermal, which is chapter seven of that code, so that's just passing that along to everybody. Longer statement is in regards to education in the market with engineers and customers. It would be helpful to have a lunch and learn one hour presentation that could be used by industry representatives to provide this education on C four forty eight. Needs to be in lay terms so that it could be a broader audience than just engineers. Is that something that's already in hand or that you could foresee being developed?
Yeah, I definitely could see developing that, that's something that would be a great opportunity for IXP training committee to look at. You know, it's the IXP training committee is is already meeting on a regular basis and. Is looking at all the IXP training that's been developed over the years. That would be a great way to to help solidify all the current curriculum as well as educate people on the new standard. My opinion, it's not not my decision, but committee chairman, I'm sure could look at that.
Other than, as you've already mentioned, someone purchasing and and understanding, following the standard. Are there any priority avenues that you think would work better than others in your own personal opinion in terms of getting professionals comfortable in using the standard?
Yeah, I think a lot of it has to do with just exposure to it, at least speaking for myself. You know, our our training materials are are referencing the the C four four eight standard as we move forward. It's it's something that is just going to take a lot of communication. It it's it's not some, it's not easy in in the US and Canada, it's already part of the building code, so it's it's kind of a given. But in the US, we're we're going to have to continue to have conversations about it and reference reference the standard.
There is a chat that Carl Oreo has a question, but I don't have access to his question. So I don't know if Courtney or someone else has, or if Carl would be comfortable in typing in his question. I don't have a way to find his hand that he's raised.
Carl, if you'd like to unmute and ask the question, go right ahead.
Can we speak or?
Go right ahead, Carl.
I'm sorry?
Yes, go right ahead, ask your question.
Okay, it would be very useful as one of the sub technical subcommittee chairman. To have a clearinghouse or perhaps the clearinghouse, Jeff is you or Mark. On anybody that's of the seventy six people that are here that would like to participate in any of the subcommittees. And how can that be done? I know I'd welcome some additional help on our committee. For standing columns, and I think the open well systems would like some assistance also.
Thank you, Carl, that's a great idea, and I appreciate all your help on there, on those committees. Carl has graciously agreed to be our our chair of this next revision for standing column. And has been past chair for for open loop systems, so I will send out a note to Courtney if that's okay. And can I describe what what we're looking for there if if we do have interest? I think it's great to involve, you know, more people, we still have some time, our kickoff is next week. I know we don't have a whole lot of time, but but maybe we can, anybody who's interested will be able to add that, add them to the invite, thank you, Carl.
Thank you.
Those are the the questions that have been posed through the chat and in advance. There was a comment to share that keeping in mind using metrics as much as possible. Where appropriate would be useful to as well.
Okay. Metrics for measurement or the metric system, I'm not sure.
Well, it just says, please also use metric system.
Yeah, it actually has both in the standard.
I thought it did.
Both SI and and standard.
Right. Then that's the end of the questions that I in comments that I have, Courtney, if you want to finish up, I'll turn it back over to you.
Wonderful, I think that's great, I couldn't be more excited about the opportunity here to not only have participation from our membership. But to really be a part of a standard that's consistent. Very, very exciting stuff and looking forward to continuing the relationship with CSA moving forward. And I do think that it's a a great opportunity for either the train committee to come up with something. Or we have a lunch and learn that we could record to be able to provide to code officials. I think that consistent messages is something that this industry has been looking for for a long time. And we'd be happy to provide that here at IXP. So we do have the May Town Hall set up, it will be a presentation from Boyd Lee with CK Energy Co-op. And I couldn't be more excited about this presentation. I've listened to Boyd speak before and was very encouraged and excited to share the information he had available. Going to any of my local utilities and co-ops. And it just as a reminder, these presentations are free, so please feel free to share the link and invite to any of your utilities or co-ops that you may have local to your state. And have them take a listen to what Boyd has to say, I think it's just super exciting. So with that, if we don't have any more questions, I want to thank Jeff so much for being with us today, I couldn't be more excited. With everything going on with CSA and the updated standard and for IXP's participation in doing so. So thank everyone for, I just thank everybody for being here today, for taking the time with us. I crossed all the time zones we have here, whether it's your lunch hour or early in the morning for you. I greatly appreciate your participation in these town halls and we couldn't be here without you. Again, if you have any questions about your membership certifications or anything else, please feel free to email info@ixpa.org. And we'll happy to address any of those concerns. But with that, we will close for today and I hope everyone has a wonderful rest of their day and week, thank you so much.
Thank you.